Welcome and thank you for joining us today for this Democrats of Greater Tucson discussion of the issues with our Democratic candidates for Tucson City Council Ward 6. My name is Michael Bryan. I'm the First Vice Chair and Program Director for Democrats of Greater Tucson, the DGT.org. We Tucsonans have a primary election coming up on August 5th with a registration deadline to participate of July 7th and ballots arriving by mail and early voting commencing on July 9th. The DGT.org is a membership-based club and a political action committee with a 50-year track record of promoting democratic values and candidates in our southern Arizona community. Apart from special events like this one, we also do a weekly live show on Zoom most every Monday at noon with a featured guest, a candidate, an elected official, or a subject matter expert, and hold monthly in-person happy hours to provide our members and the public with access to useful political conversations and encouragement and encourage engagement with the democratic process and our own government. Our events are generally free and open to the public. Please visit us at theDGT.org to learn more about our upcoming events and browse our recorded shows. If you appreciate and support our mission to help Democrats do democracy better, then please become a paid member for just $24 a year. We're joined today by our three Democratic primary candidates in Ward 6 in alphabetical order: Leighton Rockefeller Jr., Miranda Schubert, and James Sinix. Our goal today is to have an open discussion of the issues facing Tucson amongst the candidates, not a formal debate. Moderating and posing initial questions today is my colleague and fellow DGT Board Member Kay Barofon. My role will be to ask follow-ups and to prompt and encourage substantive discussion of the issues amongst the participants. Okay?
Thank you for that, Mike. So before we start the questions, I just want to share with you what are the basic rules of the road so that we are all aware of what we're doing. There are four points here. First, we intend this to be more of a general discussion than anything else. And so we will ask that question, and each of you will get a chance to answer that specific question. We will have follow-up questions, which may be for each of you or for all of you, and we expect you to answer the question being asked and not a question that you think is being asked. So please note that we will hold you to the question if needed. Finally, we would like to avoid your attacking one another. We want a discussion. If you have a question of another candidate, ask me first, and we will find the time to handle it if necessary. Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm very glad that you're all here. So welcome.
Thank you.
My questions would range from a set of very specific issues and from which we can perhaps go to more general formats or form of statements. We'll involve water, housing, energy, and political power, not necessarily in that order. It's going to be a bit mixed up. So the first question that I have to ask you is this: Tucson's City Council's structure places a great deal of power in the hands of an unelected manager. What is your perspective on this? Would you like to start, Jim?
I'm not against the city manager system. I think it's good to have experts doing a lot of the jobs or looking more specifically into the management of the city and how it's basically run the nuts and bolts, so to speak. What it sets up is the city council mostly, we have a weak mayor system, so the city council mostly has a say over the direction, the future of Tucson. And that, I believe, is what we as potential councilors should be focused on, is where we're going. And then we can direct the city manager to achieving those goals. And so I'm not against the idea.
What do I do?
I'm gonna have to agree with Jim. I think it is a system that is not without flaws. You know, and I don't want to go against the question, but I will say, I wish we had more and regular audits of that office. I wish there was a stronger oversight committee for that office so that the council members had a outsider perspective on how that office was operating, whether it be based on efficiencies or whether they were taking the right steps to make the decisions, because they are making a lot of decisions. However, I think when it comes to running a city of this size, I'm gonna have to agree with Jim in that there is a lot of benefit to having an office that is in place, operating with the expertise that goes along with it, without the turnover that goes along with having an elected council coming in and out of office. So for that reason, I like it. Can there be improvements? Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I'm definitely supportive of the system that we currently have in place. I mean, the budget's a moral document. City council is there to represent constituents, the will of their constituents, right? So that's where the direction and the moral part should come from. It's the city manager's job to balance the budget. And yeah, sometimes these things come into conflict, but I feel like it is, it can be productive conflict to have that kind of tension between we need to balance the budget, make sure everything pencils out, and we have very real needs that we need to deliver to constituents. And Tucson isn't without its struggles right now. And, you know, just to circle back on Jim saying that the mayor has a weak vote, I feel like not everybody listening to this will understand what that means. What that means is that the mayor can't make a motion on her own, and she also can't provide the second to a motion that's on the table. So she's just another vote. You know, and in terms of like the morals that are guiding the budget, I will also say that personally, my approach is that we need to be thinking about costs just beyond monetary, also thinking about long-term environmental costs, long-term costs to economic mobility, you know, is this increasing harms that are already present in our community around substance abuse, lack of access to treatment, lack of access to mental health?
We come to those issues.
Right? So it's like, right? So that's the job of the council. And I'll close by saying that this is part of why I advocate for a participatory budgeting structure where the community has an actual say in how that money is being spent. I think otherwise, it's just rhetoric on the part of a council member to say that they're being representative. Like, you need to put money into things that you say that you care about. So.
Okay, I have a couple of clarifications. First of all, you mentioned, Leighton, that you wanted to see stronger oversight of the city manager.
Right.
What would that consist of? Let's discuss that a little bit.
It would consist of regular and more formal audits of his office, or his or her office.
So that would be an outside party, isn't it?
Ideally, yes. Yes.
Does anybody else have any other ideas for how to provide stronger oversight to the city manager's office?
Well, I would just say that, you know, if you are somebody who is, if you are a council member who's truly representing the will of your constituents, then you have broad backing and you have a coalition behind you, which means that you have political influence and power to influence those decisions. And that, to me, is like, that's my approach to influencing the budget, is if you're on the right side of the issue, like, you know, that's the strength, that's where the true strength comes from, not having more meetings or paying a consultant a bunch of money to do an outside audit.
But to me, it's not just about the budget. I mean, we want to make sure that that office is running the surveys properly, is doing the community outreach properly, is doing what is needed to be done to come to the decisions that as closely align with what the city of Tucson residents are wanting. And I, for example, a few months ago, you know, the manager brought up that it had been years since there had been an audit of the city of Tucson employees in general. And that means that for many years, we have not taken a look at who is due for a raise, a promotion, who is not performing well. And I'm not blaming this on our current manager at all, because he's only been there a short time. But what I'm saying is, in theory, having an oversight of that office would catch errors like that that we could avoid, because that's a tremendous, probably inefficiencies there. And also, it's not good for our employees who deserve the raise or a promotion.
Can I come in with an additional question on this? One of the ways of thinking about this is that the city, the manager's office is the one that is essentially the input, the input point for almost anything that happens. So somebody in the city has got a very good idea or proposal or something like that, he becomes a triage for it before you ever get to hear about it in the council. Is that a good idea? And is that what you mean by what?
Can you clarify a bit? Do you mean input from the council inputting to the manager? Or you mean the residents?
The other way around. Yes.
Residents inputting to the manager and then coming?
And he has the choice.
And the question is?
He has the choice of deciding that something is a good idea or not a good idea. He plays triage, right? And so you'd never hear about the idea if the manager says, you know, that's not a great idea, is it?
Do you have an ex, sorry?
No, I don't.
I mean, in theory, no, that's awful. In theory, I don't like that.
It happens all the time, doesn't it? It could be like an agent to somebody who's an actor, you know?
Possibly.
Well, the city manager acts at the direction of the mayor and council. So I mean, in theory, if somebody came to city manager with an idea, city manager would still need, somehow the mayor and the council would be involved.
Let's just tell our audience, the best way to do it is to approach the city council person.
Yeah, exactly.
Or the board office.
Yeah, okay. So I mean, that's just a clarification that I was.
Politics gets a bit dirty name, but really, I mean, if you look at it from its root, the opposite of politics, which is about movement of populations, the opposite of politics is warfare, right? And this is where the council's politics come in. A council member, a council office, needs to have, to be providing information to their constituency so that their constituency will then give information back to the council. Because the other thing that Leighton mentioned is oversight. Well, that is, that is a main job of the council, is to oversee the workings of the government. And so I would suggest that there might be a budget line put in so that the council can choose an independent auditor when that is needed or when that is seen as important. And it should be public.
On the same topic, but slightly different, you mentioned the cost of long-termism or the lack of long-termism, most importantly, in our budgetary process. Are there fiscal tools and controls and measures that we should be looking at or using to ensure that the city council, the city council and the manager have more of a long-term view of our budgetary requirements and constraints? I'm talking, for instance, I'll give an example. We put in a new development, and it requires roads and sewers and electrical connections, all that. All that has a maintenance cost that stretches out 20, 25 years. Our budget does not. And so a lot of those long-term liabilities don't end up on the balance sheet and aren't taken into account in penciling out a new deal for development or what have you. And that can cause long-term liability issues for a city. A lot of cities collapse financially because of this situation. Are there ways that we can institute reforms and controls on the budgetary process so that this sort of thing doesn't happen, that it's taken into account of before we get to a point where we have a crisis? Any one of you want to respond to that?
I mean, I'll jump in. You know, I think there is a risk of putting too many controls, which takes more and more of the council's ability away from them, to set those directions. So I think the short answer is, elect a council that is going to keep an eye on those things and account for those things, and direct the mayor to draft a budget that accounts for those things. And I think that we saw with the loss of Prop 414 in a very big way a few months ago, that this was a huge expansion of government, so to speak, without any mention or thought of how we're going to pay for hundreds of new personnel, especially in police, new vehicles, new airplane, maintenance of new buildings. None of that was included in the proposition. And I think, as we saw with the huge loss, that people were afraid it was just going to be another proposed tax increase in 10 years when that one expired.
Yeah, just to remind people, Prop 414 was?
The sales tax proposal. It was called Safe and Vibrant Cities.
And how much of an increase in the sales tax was it?
Half a cent.
Half a cent.
For 10 years.
But yeah, I mean, basically, the problem to me, what I heard at the doors when I was, you know, knocking in different neighborhoods around Ward 6, was that people felt that the allocations didn't contribute to long-term economic mobility. They would tell me things like, gosh, I wish there were more money for housing. And so generally, I would say that when I talk about things like we need more of a long-term view, it has to do with what pathways we're creating for Tucsonans to be economically mobile, to access better jobs, and have decent housing, and not spend all their money on transportation. And I will also say that, you know, as somebody who wants to come in and, you know, really tackle the crises, the overlapping crises we have on our hands now with a sense of urgency, and has frequently made the argument that the way that we're doing things now isn't helping, I think it's important to meet with the relevant offices and personnel that are actively dealing with these problems now, to really untangle, why is it happening this way? What are the existing constraints that you're operating within? I think it's pretty easy to kind of imagine like, oh, I'll sweep in, you know, with my observational skills or my critical thinking skills and have good ideas, and I just need to let them know, and then it'll change. And I think the reality is that change is a little bit harder, more incremental and messier than that. So all of that is to say, like, I'm very much somebody who would approach the council offices, somebody who wants to consult with subject matter experts, and the people who are already involved to see where they're at, because this is also about building relationships and trust.
Jim, do you want to jump in on this? How do we get more of a long-term view?
Well, first, by talking about things in the long term. You know, we talk about the budget. What we'll say is, oh, Tucson's got this $2.5 billion budget. Now, look at the budget that's just been passed, and what they will tell you is about $750 million. So what's on the other part of the budget? We should talk about that. I mean, I'm gonna bring out my public school teacher point of view. It fits in with 414 as well. What they did is they ran a special election. Special elections are low voter turnout operations. And that can work well for your side when you're proposing that kind of election, but it also makes it easy to oppose. Okay? The way you combat any of these problems is with information. We should have the most educated populace in the state of Arizona. That information should be right out there for them. If the mayor and council passes it, the mayor and council should come out and tell us why. Forum opportunities, just like what we're doing right here, will tell you where we're coming from. And you may not like where we're coming from, but at least you'll know why.
In fact, I think at this point, I can segue to the next question.
I just have one more follow-up. And that's, you mentioned participatory budgeting. Can you explain what that is? Explain its history with the city of Tucson, maybe its history with other cities, very briefly. And, you know, each of you tell me whether or not you think that's a good idea of that idea.
I mean, generally, participatory budgeting, as it's been practiced in not very many cities, this is a pretty new thing, has to do with the community giving meaningful input about spending priorities. And I think, Jim, what you were talking about with the $750 million versus 2.4, 2.5, I think that's the general fund, which is often what the city council focuses on.
Right.
Right, because that's the part that, you know, also saying that for anybody who's listening. But right now, like, the only participatory budgeting we have in Tucson was piloted by Vice Mayor Lane Santa Cruz. And this was actually one of the things that really got me interested in local governance. Like, holy cow, people actually will have a say in how the money is spent, which sidebar, should not be a political thing, is also a little bit wild, like, it's our money, you know? But it's not true participatory budgeting. What Vice Mayor Santa Cruz is doing is using her discretionary funds in a way that I believe is more equitable than just relying on, like, do you know the council member? Do you even understand?
What's the dollar amount on that?
That this is money you can access. I don't think it's very much. I want to say it's like quarter of a million, it's like $250,000.
I was gonna say 200, so somewhere around there.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Like, it's not like, oh, my gosh, this is, you know, so much. But it is an amount that each council office gives, gets in order to spend how they see fit.
Do you have any ideas about expanding that?
I do. Well, I mean, so far, like, it's not true participatory budgeting, because it's just that discretionary pot that doesn't actually, like, connect with services. But it's really cool to see what community members come forward with. Like, they've developed a process where people can put together projects that they believe deserve funding. And so it's also a very tangible expression of what people want to spend their money on, what they see for Tucson that's going to make it a better place to live. So I think the next step would be looking for opportunities to insert line items into the actual budget that's connected with things like affordable housing, emergency shelter, other services within the social safety net that help people not get arrested and have other pathways. So I'd be interested in slowly, like, seeing that. I'd also be very interested in meeting with other electeds in these other cities to see what lessons they've learned, because this is not reinventing the wheel.
Leighton, Jim, you want?
Yeah, you know, I'll add that I think that it's a really great idea, and I love that Lane Santa Cruz has implemented it in a way. I do have concerns, as with any democracy, the problem is scale. And as we were just talking about participation, low participation, what you have to figure out how to avoid is activist capture. I mean, we've seen it in national politics. We're suffering from it now. And, you know, I'm not trying to say that there's anyone in Tucson that wants to do anything bad for Tucson, but there are people that have agendas. And we have, if it can be administered in a way that gets massive participation from the people, so as to be a true demonstration of what we're looking for, then yeah, I think it's great. But this is the inherent problem with democracy to begin with, and why, as we've grown in population, we have to have elected officials and everything like that in order to administer democracy.
Yeah. Well, I'm a Little D Democrat before. I'm a Democratic Party Democrat.
What does that mean?
Little D means I'm all about democracy.
Oh.
Democracy.
Instead of the party.
Conceptually.
Miranda, I can't add to what you said. It's great.
Oh, thanks, Jim.
Leighton, can't add to it.
Oh, well, thanks.
All of that's true.
Look how convivial we are.
I'm hearing a but.
But.
A more modern democracy can actually handle this. Okay, if you have representatives, let's say a neighborhood association put forward a representative for a sub Ward council so that they could talk to the council. Remember? Just as an example, there could be other examples. We can prioritize things with something as simple as what some people call ranked choice voting, which can actually add priorities, okay? Using the Borda system where your first choice gets five points and your second choice gets four points, we can determine what the priorities of a group are. If you've ever had to order pizza for a big party, you know it's difficult trying to find out what everybody wants, but you can actually do that with that system. So that's just an idea. The question is, is Tucson ready for such a thing? I believe Tucson is.
Good to hear. Let's move on.
Yeah, let's go on to the next question. It's slightly different.
I wanted to talk more about that, Jim.
No, me too. I'm like, seriously?
You guys can have a good discussion after.
Oh, okay, deal.
You can come back later on. So here's the next one. If you consider that homelessness is, in essence, a person's inability to pay the rent, what would you do for and with the homeless population?
If that is the sole reason why they are
I think.
Living without.
That's a major reason. That would be a major reason for it. The definition of homelessness is that it's somebody who doesn't have a home, which I think is a tautology. So if you want to get down to the more causative definition of it, a homeless person is simply one who can't afford to pay the rent. That's it.
Well, I mean, but the problem with that assumption is that that might be one of the top reasons someone initially finds themselves in that position. But there are a lot of other things that are keeping them there once they get there. And that's where...
Let's take it from there and say, what would you do with and for such homeless people, regardless of which status they're in, or which state of mind they're in, or which...
Right. I mean, we just, I mean, the city can't fight this problem alone. I think our city the last few years has been stuck in this mindset where we think we are the best entity to fix all of these problems. And so we set up our nonprofit to build affordable housing. We want to build our own drug treatment center for addiction. We want to, we can't do mental health, but we want to work directly with the county to administer health. And what we're ignoring is all of these incredible organizations that are right here in southern Arizona, like La Frontera, who we haven't really contracted with in years, who is the largest provider of affordable housing in the Southwest, and one of the largest of mental health care. So again, I'll shorten it. We need to partner with these people. We need to stop thinking we can do this alone, and we need to get all of these organizations on the same page with the same goal and figure out how to achieve that goal. Because right now, we are fighting this problem on an island. So that includes figuring out how to prevent people from getting in the streets to begin with. But the harder challenge probably is figuring out how to break addictions and mental health issues that are keeping them there.
What do you, Miranda?
What would I do for currently homeless people? I would find them access to shade, to drinking water, to a place where they can legally be, because right now, they don't. So by definition, every time you are seeing an unhoused person, they are somewhere they are not supposed to be, unless you're literally in a shelter, which, by the way, none of them have space. I'm in close contact with groups that are working on the ground, mutual aid groups that are crowdfunded and distributing hygiene products and food weekly. Actually, every day of the week, you can find a different group. And they're doing a lot with what they have. So I just imagine how much more we could do if we had an intentional setup that allowed for these distribution sites, you know, scattered sort of small-scale legal encampments that include wraparound services, more access to emergency shelter, and being very intentional about where we are putting emergency shelter, where we are building affordable housing of all types. The city's been doing amazing. I mean, this is the most progress the city has made on housing in a very long time, you know, tripling the amount of, like, money that's being spent on affordable housing, increasing drastically the production of affordable housing units. I think as all of these things happen, those interventions need to be incorporated and embedded in the fabric of the city, near services, near opportunities in transit, so that people have a shot of staying in their homes permanently. I also definitely support a partnership approach and really consulting with the experts who are working closely with unhoused populations on the ground. But we don't have enough shade. We don't have enough water. We don't have enough access to showers. Unhoused people have been, I've been hearing for years about the need for lockers. What do people, when I talk to them, say that they want? They don't say, I want a roof over my head, you dummy. Like, that'll stop me from being homeless. They say, I'd really like an address to list on a job application. I'd really like someplace to lock up my belongings so that they don't keep getting stolen. And I would like to stop getting swept from site to site and not given resources. So that's what I would do.
Jim?
Well, when I worked down in Fort Huachuca, I got some training in total quality management. It's Edwards Deming idea of a management system that was rejected in the 1950s in the United States, but they sent Deming to Japan to rebuild their post-war structure, and it worked. And the two ideas are continual improvement, which we should always be talking about. We're never there. But the other one is, if you go for the largest problem, oftentimes you solve some of those minors. So I think what you're talking about in your question is what George H. W. Bush referred to as the houseless, ones that can't pay, that may be evicted from their housing, and they don't have any place to go. And then that's a long road down to becoming the, some of the people that are worse off. One of the things we can do by going after this larger idea is by providing a place where someone who's in trouble can call and just say, help me. One place where they can say, help me. Now, the city of Tucson has an awful lot of land within the city. We have property on bus lines. We also have non-governmental groups that would like some land so that they can build tiny houses on them, so that someone who got evicted, for whatever reason, can actually... can actually go and have a roof over their heads, a place for their male to go, go to, a place to receive a phone call so they can get a job again. See, when you be, when you lose your house, it's not just losing your house, you lose your dignity.
Yep, your security, your safety. I saw Reddit post somebody asking, where can I call?
Yeah.
And that is not, I mean, I felt awful and there were some good responses, but I'm thinking there is a failure here when somebody is having to turn to Reddit to ask what to do. I'm about to be evicted. I can't pay the rent. And I have been reaching out to the office in Tucson that is responsible for preventing this sort of thing for weeks and have not been able to get through. And the, the answer was you gotta call like on the third day of the month. And it's like that, we, that is a breakdown and we, the best way to prevent a problem from growing is to, is, is to stop that right there. And, and like talk to Sister Jose. They're having a huge influx of, of seventy-plus-year-old women who, who are on a fixed income with their social security check and they're getting evicted because they can't afford higher rents. This is just a really sad situation. And it sounds like all three of us are really focused if elected to work on this problem. We all have slightly different views of how that would happen. But it's the number one response at doors. I'm sure you see it too, Miranda, Jim.
Let me turn this to a slightly larger issue because the, the affordability of housing is very much linked to the supply of housing. And one could argue that a lot of our problems are due to a, an undersupply of housing here in Tucson. And that impacts issues of, number one, you can't address the scale of the problem with just government.
Yep.
The private partners, especially, you know, home builders and, and construction companies and so forth, have to be incentivized to, to make that housing. And they have, it has to be possible to increase density here in the city so that, you know, the housing is accessible to people so that they can get the jobs. So my question is, let's discuss a little bit about how the city can work with private industry in order to increase that supply, increase affordability and increase accessibility of housing to address the crisis at the root. Ideas? Miranda, you want to start?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it goes back to what I talk about a lot, which is relationship building and communication. And I think it's important to, to connect with these folks and talk about like what their barriers are. But as the council member, like holding space for ensuring that these are quality projects, that these are responsive to what the community wants. I have yet to encounter a community member who says, I'd love a giant parking lot right in front of a super ugly apartment building, you know? And so it's just the same requests come up over and over again, which is why I'm supportive, I was supportive of the community corridors tool.
I was just about to mention.
Right, like, okay, the default needs to be something better than this and we need to be looking for ways to incentivize. I think that we're really constricted at the city level, unfortunately, because we are in Arizona and state preemption ties our hands in terms of baking affordability in, in a more strong way, but there's still, there's still, you know, sort of local interventions and, and ways to be creative with the, the carrots and the sticks that we have. So I think relationship building, I think, you know, looking at the housing needs assessment, because it's not just an opinion, it's a fact that we need like thirty-three thousand units of housing the next ten years to, to address the need. This was, this was completed as part of the state-level housing legislation that was passed, the middle housing that's going to enable more, you know, duplexes and multiplexes and things like that. The CASIDA, you know, sort of legislation, making it easier for people to build small homes on big lots. It, one of many tools that we need to be using to address the problem. And while I think that these private partnerships are really important and definitely a piece of the puzzle, they're just one piece. I'm incredibly interested in exploring reform of public housing, the city being aggressive about using the land that it currently has. There are public housing units right now that are sitting vacant and boarded up that need repair. I was walked to one down the block from a house party I was at. This guy was like, I swear I'm not kidnapping you, you just need to come see this. And he's like, this has been vacant for eight years.
There's one that I'm.
We need to look at that. Yeah, we need to, we need to look, we need to look at those things. It's like on the edge of, of hi- of highly desirable neighborhood, you know? So we need to look at public housing. I'm really into social housing too. So I think all of these tools need to be, we kind of need to do everything everywhere all at once, in my opinion.
Let me just make a quick plug real quick. The DGG.org, talk to the planning department, the people responsible for the community corridors tool. We have an hour-long discussion on that subject. So please search our YouTube channel for a community corridors tool to learn more. Leighton, your response?
The community corridors tool is, has so much potential. It also has a lot of potential for, to, to do very little. And I want to be sure that the city doesn't drop the ball on this because there are a lot of requirements in order to get those extra floors, those extra density, the, the fewer parking spaces. And I worry that our development office is, is, is gonna make it too difficult. And we see it time and time again that developers get frustrated and they just decide they're going to take their project to unincorporated Pima County because they're tired of waiting for a permit or they know how it's gonna go or they know that the rezoning is gonna face a lot of backlash. So a lot of this is, is breaking down barriers in that office, the permitting office, fast-tracking zone changes. We've got, and so I'll, I'll, I'll go back and say this. Ward Six is the densest of the wards. And we don't have nearly as much open land in Ward Six as the other wards, just by nature of being the, the hub among spokes. So a lot of what I'm saying does not necessarily, will not necessarily work in Ward Six. But there are industrial areas in Tucson that are largely vacant. And it seems like we should be figuring out how to fast-track that to a zone change so that we can get developers to build density in those areas with housing. Because right now they're not contributing to the city in any way, in any way. They're just sitting vacant like.
But they're zoned industrial for a reason.
They're, they're zoned industrial for a reason, but they're, they're right up against residential areas.
Yeah, but, I mean, I was just, I mean, I was talking with somebody in Army Park yesterday and they live near the train tracks. And they were just like, it's so bad. And it's like, that's a residential area. So imagine building even closer to some of these industrial features. I mean, that's like a sore spot in Tucson in terms of like the history of our development where, you know, but black and brown neighborhoods tend to be closer to infrastructure and closer to areas that frankly should have been zoned industrial or provided buffer between, between those areas and, and homes. So just.
I mean, that's just an example of you, you're adding all these requirements and, and caveats. And I, I feel like that is constantly preventing our city from making the changes that we need. And Miranda, I get it, but there are also like luxury apartments right along the rail tracks there.
Yeah.
And, and, well, I mean, it's, that doesn't have to be an undesirable.
I mean, those, I mean, many times like apartments.
We have to think beyond that.
Isn't really a.
I mean, if we need density, we need, we need to look at the areas that are not being used. And we are no longer an industrial city like we used to be.
What do we do?
Good conversation. I got a simple pro, a simple solution. A simple solution, so I'm gonna solve the whole thing. City of Tucson, one of the things that we can do is we can regulate. If you're gonna build in Tucson, how about requiring, if you're building in Tucson, that you provide at cost solar on that house, on that development? Think of it this way. If, if I have solar panels on my house, okay, they paid for themselves in eight years. That's because I bought them, okay? But if that was in my mortgage, right? I can actually afford more mortgage. That makes housing more affordable. Plus, it helps the environment. It's a simple, simple solution and it fits with one of my main problems, having lived in this city for so long. We do not build this city as if we live in a desert. We have one resource. We ship everything else into this town. We have one resource, the sun. And we don't utilize it well enough and it can make.
We might be off-subject here.
It's not off-subject because.
It's affordability. I mean, the, the cost of maintaining a place is also part of the affordability. So I think that's.
It's a simple solution that makes housing more affordable. Okay, the developer should not be able to add on profit. It should be at cost. There's a profit already being made by the person who installs the solar. The, the developer should not be able to then double the price, which is the capitalist, capitalist way of doing things, right? And thus, when you fly over this town and you look down on the roofs, why don't you see solar panels everywhere?
See, fair point. Well made. Let's move on.
Yeah, but, but I'm going to stay on the topic because there's another side to this. You talked about carrots and sticks. Here's your stick question, right? Are you in turn for the next question?
I don't know.
Yeah, let's make it.
Yes.
On the stick side, on the stick side, Tucson City Council has a new ordinance imposing fines on people sleeping in washes. What are your thoughts on that?
I mean, one of the things I was gonna say in response to Jim's regulate comment was that having rules in place is just one piece of the puzzle. The reason that people are camping out in washes is not because they think it's okay or great. It's because of lack of access to service, lack of access to emergency shelter. I, Vice Mayor Santa Cruz wrote an op-ed that was published in The Sentinel. And I agree that this essentially criminalizes homelessness, punishes people who are the last people who should be punished when we don't have, we have not adequately like invested in, in services and resources to actually help people, you know? I mean, even just looking at substance addiction services, like there's just not enough access to treatment and it's really hard. It's really hard to even just navigate an individual onto a shelter. My mom-in-law ran into a guy who was rolling down East Twenty-second in a wheelchair. And she and two of her friends spent literally all morning finding this guy a spot. And it involved errands to like go fill his prescription for his cardiac medicine, you know, like. And she's just like, this is what they're talking about when they say that there are barriers. This took us four, five hours and these are individuals who are adept at navigating the system. This guy was, you know, out in the sun, undernourished, dehydrated, right? Needed medication.
So are you saying that you're against the idea of fines for people who sleep?
We have to provide the solutions. I mean, if we're going to impose a fine, these aren't people who can pay anyway. And honestly, the idea of.
That is not like a complete answer, Miranda.
Yeah.
So.
The answer, yes or no?
Yeah.
I guess so.
Do you, do you approve it?
No.
Say, okay.
No, not at all. No, no, to be very clear.
That was the question.
I think it's, I think it's short-sighted. I think the liability issue of, oh, the city might get sued, right? I mean, the thing is, is Prop Three, Three Twelve, like property taxes are so low in Tucson that people aren't really going to be able to, number one, demonstrate and overcome the threshold of saying that they experienced a decline in property values or whatever. And two, actually get a decent payout. So I think it's a little bit of a red herring.
Let me contextualize a little bit here for folks. Prop Three One Two was a statewide proposition that indicated
Oh, yeah.
Essentially that cities could be liable for not enforcing laws against homeless people that would keep them from degradating, degrading home values and property values in areas near where homeless people congregate. So one of the responses has been this.
Passing ordinances in response.
Exactly. And, and let me just say that in, in fact, recently, in the last couple of days, a lawsuit actually was
Yep.
found with liability against the city. And so it's not a theoretical issue as to whether there'll be liability by the cities. It's a factual issue that there will be liabilities. How do you balance that liability city versus the humanitarian aspect?
It doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense to pass this law right now. And here, here is prop, here, this is the, I, I anticipated this question. But when that, when the council passed this camping ban or whatever we want to call it, I started, I read the law that was enacted as a result of Prop Three One Two. This clearly says that a town or city can be liable for failing to enforce existing laws pertaining to illegal camping. So how does it make sense to pass more laws to ban illegal camping? So I don't think the logic behind this, this new ordinance makes sense, not at all to me. To say nothing of the, of, of, of making this harder for the people living in the washes, I don't even want to talk about that. I want to talk about the legal, the, the legal reasons that the, the council says they did it. It doesn't make sense. We're setting ourselves up for more lawsuits with this ordinance. And I, I watched the study session. I watched it again and I didn't see any discussion about that and I'm not sure why. I, I, it, it doesn't make any logical sense to me why this was passed.
What about you, Jim? What is your position on this?
As written, I would be against it. But here's one thing I would add to that. Our riparian areas should be sacrosanct in a desert. They need to be managed. They can become extremely dangerous if that's a camping zone. But if we're gonna take away something, we have to provide something in return. These are people, if they're in our boundaries, they are our citizens. They have an equal, they have equal rights to the same people who live in the large lot, large building, housing. So there needs to be a place for them to go. I don't think that the washes are a good place for them to be.
Let me just note here that Mayor Romero in, when this ordinance passed, indicated that elections have consequences, that Three One Two was passed by the city of Tucson. And I, I fact-checked that. In fact, it is true that inside the boundaries of the city of Tucson, the vote in prop, in support of Three One Two was fifty point four percent versus, you know, the slightly, very slightly less against.
I mean, clearly we're seeing people pushing back against fires in the washes, what they perceive to be nuisances. And that is their right. We, we can feel this way about the current homeless problem and we do, many of us. And I, but I don't, when the city council passes this ordinance and in the same breath says, we don't have the manpower to enforce it. I, you know, I get it. I get that we want to, the people of Tucson want their city to look better and to be cleaned up. And we want these people to have better options. But thi- this, this ordinance that they passed, to me, is.
Would it be a fair characterization to say that there may be some sentiment here that we are trying to appear to be doing something and rather than actually doing something to address the problem?
Maybe, but, but what we are actually doing is setting up ourselves up for more lawsuits.
So more importantly, what all three of you are saying is that no one is.
Look, I think that people passed Prop Three One Twelve because I think there was also a compelling idea of, well, we gotta force these folks to act more urgently and tackle the problem. Like, if there had been a different proposition on the ballot that was like, that, that had, that included a whole host of investments in affirming community services, I think that would have passed, you know? Like, I don't think people, I don't think people are pumped up about like the potential of getting to sue the city.
So I should go on to the next question. I should go on to the next question. That's a very clear segue. Let me go there.
Segue it.
So here's the point. RTA is coming up for reauthorization. The light rail system has transformed the shape and scope of downtown. We know that there's been a positive impact for working people from free public transport. Please address these transportation-related issues.
All three.
How?
I'm a big fan of, of light rail, okay? I became a, a fan of light rail in, in a, on a trip to Portland. Here's what I saw. Light rail was, A, it was so fast that they couldn't charge it. So it was free. And thus it became a pillar of the community. And when you were on light rail, if you looked at the population that was using light rail, it was everything from three-piece suits and briefcases to school kids, school kids and their hip-hop gear. It builds community. That's what a good transportation system does. It builds community. And that, it, that should be the number one priority for anyone who seeks to change the way city government works. It should work for community.
I have a follow-up on that, but.
Yeah, so thi- this is where Jim and I both wrote op-eds about this and, and Miranda is obviously very pro-free.
I wrote an op-ed two years prior.
Yes, yes, I'm, I'm sorry.
Transit, not to just.
It, well, you wrote.
Public transit, not to just, my wife wouldn't forgive me if I didn't.
You wrote one on the RTA.
I wrote one on the RTA, but I also wrote one on fair.
We are all published on this matter.
So I'll start with the streetcar. It's, it's an incredible transformation of our city downtown. We spent the day on it yesterday. And it was totally free and I don't know why it was free. Because for me, I am more than capable of buying three passes for my family for the day. I think that public transportation absolutely needs to be free or deeply discounted for those who, who need that. And that is fine. For example, 18 and under, it should just be free, all of it, so that they can get to school. If you're an access recipient, we should talk about being free or deeply discounted for you, all with, just have to show your card. We can make it easy. We can go back to the way we were before fares were made free across the board. And we can bring money back into the system. I just spoke to a school teacher who works at Catalina. And he is very afraid that their attendance problems are going to be even more compounded if the city takes away the route that runs down Pima, where Catalina High is. And the problem is, there is not enough money to keep these lines going. And so I don't understand why we are saying no to potentially 10 or even $14 million a year to keep this system in, in better operational order. It's not gonna pay for the whole thing. I think it costs almost 70 million to run our transit system. But it is going to supplement it. And when we are on the council fighting over $350,000 for early education, I can't figure out why we are denying this source of revenue. So I think it was an incredible way to spend our COVID dollars from the feds. And it prevented the collapse of the buses. But I just don't see it as a sustainable way to proceed unless we figure out how to fund it without just being a part of the general budget.
So if you can summarize what you're saying, you're talking about a graded system where some people will pay and some people don't need to.
Just like it was before it was free.
I would just point out that that also includes the, the cost of administration enforcing such a system, which reduces the amount of collection from.
There's a net factor, yeah.
Absolutely. And that's significant. Okay, there's like a few things. That's like what happens when you go last. To add to what Jim is saying about a good transit system, creating community, that already happens now with our not-as-good transit system. Like, I see it all the time. And you see people who look like professionals, you see school kids, teens, college students, young professionals who are working downtown. That happens now, so if we make them even better, it'll happen more. Love the idea of seeing light rail going to the airport. This is such a winning idea for anybody who ever talks to me about it. In terms of a graded system, so, so I've been working for years on, on public transit-related issues. First and foremost, keeping it fare-free. But perhaps like more, more importantly, securing, you know, responsible and full funding of the transit system. Because even before, when there were fares, there wasn't enough funding to make our transit system great. It wasn't even coming close to helping to fund the transit systems, maybe 8 to 10%. I think the 10 to $14 million figure is incredibly optimistic and probably unrealistic, given, you know, what you were saying, Michael, about, you know, the cost of implementing, the cost of enforcement. You know, now you have money that you're dealing with. Also, safety, safety studies have been conducted. There's been research about like, what were the sources of incidents that have been reported on buses historically? And the two most significant factors were collecting fares and the mask mandate. Those were the two top things. So illuminating that friction between staff and riders also makes the buses run faster because you're not quibbling over things like the little thingy not taking your dollar bill because it's wrinkled. And the other thing I will say about a tiered system is that having any requirements in place for people to prove that they deserve to utilize that service is a barrier. I have lost track of the amount of riders that I've talked to who did have to get low-income bus passes before and how orderous that system was, if they even knew it existed. I myself would have greatly benefited from a low-income bus pass when I first moved to Tucson, didn't have a car and was supporting a partner on less than $40,000 a year. We were on food stamps, but I didn't know we could get a low-income bus pass. And, and that was actually, that cost adds up when you have to ride every single day and transfer twice. You know, I was living near the U of A and working at Desert Vista Campus, Pima Community College. And so these are the realities that people are living right now. And by instituting any kind of barrier to continuing to access this vital, what I, what I argue is a public good, is pulling the rug out from under people who are already not in a position to pay anymore than they already are. Like, it's very expensive and labor-intensive to be.
Seems clear that you're a yes for free, you're a no.
We need to find other ways to fund it.
Jim, do we have a clear answer from you?
My clear answer was, yeah. I think it builds community.
That's what he said.
Builds community.
Let me, let me just do one last.
We didn't talk about the RTA, though.
Oh, yeah, we did it. I'm so excited.
That's what I was gonna. Let's go ahead and start with you, Leighton. Let's, let's talk about that.
Apologies.
You're fired.
Yep.
So, short answer, I am in favor of a regional transportation plan. Longer answer is the one that is currently on the table.
RTA Next.
RTA Next. The draft of that, which I believe I've got here somewhere, it has a lot of good. I think it needs, it needs to be changed a bit if we have any chance of getting it passed in the city especially. And if it doesn't pass in city, I doubt it'll pass based on the, on the voters in the counties or in the other cities. So they've done, they're moving fast, finally. I wish all of these changes would have happened years ago up at the RTA Board. And, and, and that means.
Same recent turnover at the.
Right, right. We have a new director. Right? We have a new director. The mayor, I think, agrees with me that, that we need some sort of regional transportation. She's been doing a great job pushing them. They just haven't listened until recently. So it, you know, what, why do I like the RTA as it currently sits? The RTA Next, 25, almost 25% of it is dedicated to public transportation, both paying for current system and expansion. And so it, another big chunk of it is for pedestrian and bike improvements. And yes, the vast majority of it is for car-focused infrastructure. But the reality is that here in Tucson, that is how the vast majority of our residents move around the city.
Because it's their only option generally.
Well.
They wish they had different options.
What options are we gonna implement that are going to change that? I would argue that, I, I would argue that it wouldn't make a difference.
I, it's not only my opinion, it's like research-backed that every dollar invested in public transit generates $4 of economic benefit locally. The local part is super important to me. So if we're thinking long-term, it should be more, the things that you like about it, there should be more of those things than RTA Next.
Well, like I said, I think RTA Next needs some help in order to pass. And perhaps to get her on board too.
Yeah, what about you?
I'm gonna add to the cost of those buses. I don't want to take advertising off those buses. Because the city of Tucson does not advertise what it does. Our citizens don't know what our, what our, our city does for them.
So you replace it with advertising from the city.
Sun, no, Suntran. That's a Suntran bus. Oh, that's my city government driving that way. No, it is not the injury lawyer.
But Rafi.
Sorry.
I've never been on the side of a bus.
Injury lawyers are fine. They're useful too.
Interesting point.
I would urge everybody to go, what is it, south of, or west of Alvernon on Grant. Okay, that's a good example of mismanagement. It's a huge, huge project that ran out of money midway. A good manager would know, they're gonna run out of money. We probably shouldn't do this. And keep it in the bank. The other thing is, is when the RTA was originally passed, Tucson gave up a lot because they believed that they were gonna get it in the end. Well, we're not getting it in the end.
Definitely not.
RTA Next should focus on what we can get as well. I got a great idea. Got a great idea. Oro Valley to the airport, light rail. You wanna go to the airport?
Can you imagine?
If you wanna, you wanna go to the airport, you can do that. You can stop downtown, see a show, come back at night. The original light rail idea went down, went down around Broadway to Houghton. Wouldn't you, wouldn't it be nice if on the east side, you could go into a parking garage, get on light rail, come in, see a show, or get on the train, go up and see a show in Phoenix, come back and go, you could do it in one day? Especially if we had a fast train to Phoenix. Wouldn't that be nice? See, all of these things are what a city can do for you. Do for you. If you go to Europe, you will find that they actually do have a higher tax base. But generally, when you talk to them, they will say, but look what I get.
Yep.
One last thing before we move this along is Rio Nuevo was originally the basis of the question. Rio Nuevo, Rio Nuevo Gplat, in favor of extension or not?
Oh, the Gplat?
Yeah.
The government property lease excise tax?
Correct.
I was really excited when I heard about reforms that required a community benefits agreement to be in place before a Gplat could be awarded. Less clear has been the degree to which that's been enforced. But I think that that's the kind of approach that I would have to it. But there's like a lot, I mean, understatement, there's a lot going on with the Rio Nuevo Board right now. I'm very interested in seeing where things will land. Full disclosure, one of my campaign co-chairs, Corky Poster, is on the board. So I have gotten to, to learn more about the way the board is structured and why, you know, the infamous Live Nation decision was made and then, and then put on hold. Because of things like lack of call to audience being baked into the meetings, which goes back to my community benefits thing of, I am not anti-development or anti-business at all. I just think that those things need to be, I think that those decisions need to be made through the lens of looking at long-term economic and environmental impacts and how much we can keep dollars local and give opportunities to the people that are here.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
History lesson, Rio Nuevo came in because the late George Cunningham was the state legislator who found that the state government was stealing from Tucson. So here's what I gotta say about Rio Nuevo. There may be some problems within Rio Nuevo. We need to fix it. Part of it could be just an information campaign. Look what they're doing. Why are they doing it? But if it brings money into Tucson, I'm in favor.
I very well said, Jim. The only thing I would add is that it, it seems like Rio Nuevo has brought us very far in that district. And perhaps according to Tucsonans, their mission should shift a bit. And I think that's what we're seeing happening with the backlash with the comedy club that is totally dead, as far as I understand it, right? Are they just looking for a different site?
I think they might be looking for a different site.
Alright. But Rio Nuevo, I think has done a lot of good for our city. And, and I think that that's a valuable tool that they have been able to use. So we are a city, though, that the residents really like to feel like we are a part of these decisions. And we see what happens when we don't feel that way. There's instant backlash. And so the minute we forget that, we're gonna suffer the consequences. So we need to remember that.
Which is a nice segue to the next one. I was going to talk about water, but in the interest of time, I'm going to make it a very specific question.
We could take a little break. If you, if anybody wants to stand up and stretch, use the rescue.
I'm, I'm good.
I'm a school teacher.
I mean, we're supposed to like.
Are we gonna be wrapping it up soon?
We didn't really, we, because I'm, I'm the last piece, on the very last piece. So if you don't want a break, let's go ahead with this then. So the question is very specific, okay? There is a decision and progress to set up a data center in Tucson with support from the Board of Supervisors. The deal can be promoted or stopped by a city council decision around annexing the land required for the project. What is your perspective on this project?
You're looking at me or?
I think I've lost track of the show.
Who wants to go first?
I can go first.
You go first. There you go.
I'm a no. I'm a big no on annexation. I was disappointed. In the decision of the Board of Supervisors, there had been, so Supervisor Matt Heinz came forward and said that he wanted a reconsideration because TEP announced a 14% rate hike right after that decision was made, which was wild. And when it comes to the board voting on contractual matters, there's a rule that says that you can't go back and revote on it. My understanding is they're still looking for perhaps a different pathway to be able to reconsider that vote. But you're right, after that, it would come to city council. City council would have to vote on whether or not to annex because of differential water rates. If the city doesn't annex, it, it will kill the project just because of the expense. So I'm definitely a no. I think it is short sighted. I think it is a risky decision. The economic benefits are not compelling, especially when we look at what has happened in other cities like Phoenix, where their, their, their planning and zoning department is, you know, madly scrambling, trying to figure out ways to, to regain some control over how this land is being developed because data centers beget more data centers. We, we were already worried about our water future. It's wild that we have to engage in this fight. I'm a definite no. I would need to learn incredibly compelling information that would lead me to believe that this is better for our long-term water future and our long-term, the long-term health of our residents.
Jim?
Get on.
Outrage is part of our political system now. And anyone who's surprised by 14% increase announced the day after they got, they got.
Day of.
There you go. Then you were probably surprised that Donald Trump showed up at Tulsa on Juneteenth. It's part of the, it's a feature of the program.
Absolutely.
Now, did the, and I don't know the answer to this, simple question from Pima County, the supervisors. Now, to be fair, they were held in the dark as well. But a simple question, TEP, what are your plans for Ray Heitz? So they missed it. So I don't have a lot of sympathy for Mr. Heinz. Nonetheless, we've got a data center coming. Okay, the city's gonna have to annex it because it's a resource. Tucson Water's gonna have to provide water to cool the data center. We're kinda stuck. And that's a real problem. And it fits right into my ideal of that we, we do not, we do not manage this region as if it were a desert region. We have a consistent tendency at the county level and at the city level to follow a growth-for-growth-sake mentality, that just growth, as if, if we build it, they will come, is a good philosophy. Well, science teacher, that's the philosophy of a cancer cell. Okay, we're in danger with global warming coming to this region of taking ourselves out. We import everything into the city except for sunlight. Water is not a renewable resource. It is not, when I, when, when my family moved here in 1960, there were still cottonwoods on the Pantano. Cottonwoods need water all the time. They're gone. And we've been doing this for way too long and it's time to wake up. It's time to wake up. If I were on the Pima County Supervisors, I probably would have voted no. I'm surprised that they didn't, especially just because they kept it in secret. Do not keep secrets from your elected officials. If you do not trust them, then get new ones.
It's hard for me to answer because of these NDAs, which I think are ridiculous. How, why did our supervisors vote on this with only ideas of proposals? So.
Concepts of a plan.
Concepts of a plan. Thank you. I will say that I think that this is an opportunity to build a data center, which, let's be honest, this is the way the world is going. We are a world of data centers. This is an opportunity to bring what could be a model for renewable energy and renewable, I know, I know water. I know, I know water's not renewable, but purple pipe water to the data center concept. There are data centers in New Mexico and other places that run on a hundred percent solar and that, that, that use um, re, I'm sorry, what's the word? Reclaimed water, thank you. We can do, this is, they were gonna build eighteen miles of purple pipe, all of which could be shot off to different parts of the city and community. It wasn't just exclusively for the data center, or I'm sorry, if it's, if it's implemented, that is the goal. So uh, it's hard for me to say whether uh, the city should or should not annex because there's a dearth of information here. But I do think that we, as a city, have this tendency to shun any investments and it continues to hurt us. The way to build the city you want, you need to raise the money to build it. And I'm sorry, that is just capitalism, it is, you, you need, you need income to build, to increase your general fund so that you can pay for the infrastructure that you want and the programs that you want. And we continually say no to this, and this, if, if the city doesn't annex it would be yet another example of us in effect saying to the business community at large that we are closed for business, and I don't like that, alright? I don't like that, so again, I need more information, but I think this is an opportunity to build an example of a, of a, of a environmentally, uh, or more environmentally friendly data center that we should seize upon if the numbers are indeed what they say they are. T E P doing this rate hike thing, I don't know what they're doing. I don't know what they're, they're not showing up to the city meeting for the franchise agreement.
That's right.
I don't know what their playbook is right now, other than they're just done with the city and they're just gonna say, we don't need a franchise agreement and.
Kinda do though, but you know, it's.
Well, I mean, technically they don't, technically they don't need it. But I don't know what they're doing or why, they say it was coincidence, there are no coincidences. Nothing, especially with a company that large, so.
So just, just to, just very shortly, you're a probably no?
I'm definitely.
Definitely no.
Definitely no.
Well, especially not until we have more information.
So maybe if we had more information, but definitely no otherwise.
Yeah.
Um, I would have been, I, on this Pima County Board of Supervisors, I would have been a no, simply because they kept a secret.
Not on the Pima County Board of Supervisors, you'd be on the city council, so yes or no?
For what, annexation?
Yes.
You're gonna have to annex it, cuz it's, it's, it's a big money pot, so yes.
Yes, if, if the question is just strictly annexation, then yes.
Okay, very clear. So uh, now, there's one last thing before we move on. Recently, uh, our, our Attorney General, Chris Mays, has decided to intervene in the A P S rate case cuz they're raising their rates. Would you invite that or would you order that by the city attorney, an intervention into the T E P rate case in this instance because of the fourteen percent hike?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, simple, yeah, yes.
Yes, absolutely.
They just got a ten percent. The Attorney General, she's a badass.
Yeah, they just, they just gotta, they had two rate hikes in the last five years.
Yep, and it's not, it doesn't improve service.
We, we're not, we're not boosting solar by any appreciable amount or renewable energy. I don't know what they're doing at T E P.
But once again, it's an information thing. For, let's say.
But that's T E P's fault.
We're, we're, well, it's not necessarily, let's, let's just say that there is a valid argument for a fourteen percent rate hike. Tell us, tell us.
Wait, if it's a good decision, yeah.
There is way too much in our political system that treats a voter as if they're an idiot and watching a sports show.
Yeah.
We're smart people out here, and we just, we deserve the information so that we can have, very simply, informed consent, informed consent.
Right, so, so let me come back with one small um, issue that has to do with information as well and how well informed we are. In economics, there's a concept called opportunity cost. You know, for any single thing that you want to invest money on, you've got to make certain that the investment that you're making is not something that would get a better return on something else. So there was this, this, when, when the county board was meeting and there were all these questions being asked, there was one person who stood up and said, I'm a software engineer, I'm coming from California, I work on data centers. And if you take the ratio of return in terms of um, water usage per employee, per employed position, or use energy usage per employed position, or you use uh, you know, the total cost or land cost per employed position, then almost any other investment would give you a better return than a data center.
It's like on average.
Because a data center is mainly just janitors, janitors and watchmen, nothing else.
It's not innovation.
So, so, so what would you think of that question when posed with this point? That there could be a data center, or maybe there could be something else?
I think that we have to build, build synergies because what, I don't, I don't know, I mean, ideally, we would be in a position where we could say, well, we've got, for the, we've got this plot of land, we've got a proposition for a data center, for a, a new um, aerospace uh, company and for, I don't know, a third option.
How about a giant dog park?
But we.
No, I don't.
Well, no, but I, I'm talking about a business, something um, something that would add some jobs to the economy. So ideally, we would be in a place to have those options, but this is that we are not that city because all we, it seems like all we do is say no. And we, and there are many reasons to say no, and I agree, we live in a desert. And um, you know, I think what this, what that argument doesn't take into account is the fact, or at least the proposed fact, that this was all gonna be reclaimed water. But again, there's so much information missing, so if I was on that uh, uh, Board of Supervisors, I would have been, I, I'm not, I'm not so sure I would have said yes, cuz I don't have the information to make the decision. But uh, you know, we, we cannot, we're not gonna, we're gonna forever be stuck in this economic melee's as a city if we continue to find reasons to say no.
Okay, I hear you, what about you?
I, I don't think that we're stuck because we're saying no to industries. I think that what attracts uh, industries to Tucson, what will attract more investment, more economic vibrancy, is um, bringing down costs for housing and transportation, putting more money in people's pockets, giving them an opportunity to thrive and not just survive, like that's kind of, I see it as, you know, we need to create an ecosystem where these, these kinds of things can flourish and data centers are the opposite of that. Uh, we're talking about seventy-five jobs, we're talking on average, I saw a figure that was like, oh, it's on average one job per acre. They pay like seventy-five thousand dollars, seventy-five jobs. I think when we're looking at industries that we want to attract, again, we need to look at what kind of a Tucson we're building by having folks work in these industries. And the other aspect of my, my whole thing about public transit is that those are good jobs, those are union-paying jobs that people stay in. And you're helping people get around the city. But back to the data centers, I mean, if you wanna just talk about uh, really cut and dry, is this a good investment, is this a good return? We haven't seen any municipality that has experienced that. When I say, oh, I'd have to learn a lot more information to say yes, it's like if there was some mythical data center where it really was, like hundred percent green or powered by solar, that the, the true cost of this project wouldn't lead to long-term like draining our groundwater. Um, and, and, um, and really putting our system like in a bad position, right? We're already dealing with rate hikes, like T E P's only held accountable by the A C C. City has very little leverage in that situation, right? Like, that's messed up. With extreme heat, you need electricity to survive, it is a basic survival need. So we need to be looking at every, I mean, it's baffling to me that somebody who wouldn't have voted yes on the Board of Supervisors would vote yes on city council, that confuses me. I think we need to pull out all the stops to stop, to stop this, unless it's some magical data center that's like environmentally friendly.
So Jim, what is your position on the opportunity cost aspect that I just?
Right, I, I would, I would submit that um, if, if you don't have information, your default should be no.
Yep.
Right. We're not talking about dollars here because uh, the, the county made a nice profit on some land. They bought the land. They're gonna build the center, right? The uh, T E P will be able to provide the power because they will see the resource coming and they will, they will build it. All of that happens, where, what we are, what we are losing here is water. And is that the place, the best place for our water to go? Okay, we import water from Lake Mead that isn't dangerous position of possibly being problematic at the Hoover Dam. Not only that, when we ship that water by trench all the way to Phoenix, we evaporate as much water as Phoenix ever uses. Between Phoenix and Tucson, we evaporate as much water as Tucson ever uses because somebody, anybody, didn't say, put a lid on it.
There is an experiment currently to put solar panels over the.
A little late for that, it could have been done in the original time.
Totally agree.
So.
Maybe, maybe not when it was originally built, that was the nineteen seventies.
Where this, where, where can we better spend the water? Let's look at that, looking at dollars, so looking at dollars, where can we spend the water?
So using Miranda's ecological metaphor, we have a garden, we need to tend the garden better, we don't have time for weeds. Maybe that weed will have a beautiful flower and we'll decide we wanna keep that weed, and we don't have enough water for weeds.
I mean, we need to make sure our groundwater is, we have an air, we have an active management.
That was beautiful.
I mean, but truly, like, we, we need to make sure that we are ensuring the long-term sustainability of our water future, we were already worried about it. So I just don't, this is confusing to me.
That's the reason why I raised the question on the specific issue of the, of the, of the, of the.
Of course, there needs to be data centers, they're gonna be somewhere, they shouldn't be here, go somewhere else.
I, I think, so to answer your question, I think we can spend our water more wisely and there are better projects for our water to go to.
Fair enough, that's fine.
Uh, Hakabe is not online, I should add, the Santa Rita Mine. They have a huge pipeline that goes into our water table, and they're gonna be sucking it dry.
Yeah, there, there are several opportunities for people to do that.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna come to the very last question because we are running out of time, so this is the most general question I can ask you guys. If you're elected to office and there's only one thing you could successfully get done during your term, what would that be? Who wants to start?
I think it's Jim's turn.
Is it? Okay, Jim.
I have two big ones, you ask for one.
Mine.
Okay. I've said that, that my main concern is community. And I believe wholeheartedly that we deserve a more modern election system so that we can better represent our entire city. Our voter turnout is low. We are disenfranchising people with an old Jim Crow era law. We can begin to speak about modernizing our election system. Now, if you've watched this, if we've watched this, I think you, you'll, you'll find that you might be fine with any of us, you might like one of us better than the other. How could you have all three? I got a plan for that, it's on my website, it's on my website. There are a lot of ways we can do this better so we get better representation, so we get better questions, so we don't make them mistakes. We've had six members on the council forever, it's got a budget line of about six million dollars. We could expand to nine. We could do that, so that there are more eyes on our city. You have more chance to elect somebody who you agree with. Your vote is your value. We are denying people their value in this city and they're staying away from the polls, or, and you should watch this, they're submitting a ballot blank as a protest. Look at these things, we're not representing our people well. Thus, our mayor and council has a problem with its relevancy in the city of Tucson. So if I could change one thing, our representation.
Right, Peyton?
My one thing is a reduction in the number of people living in our streets. It is a violation of their civil rights. It is harming our riparian, it is harming our parks. It is causing us to have one of the worst pedestrian fatality rates in the country. And it's all on the backs of some of the most um, vulnerable people in our society, and it needs to improve. So I would like to see an annual reduction of at least ten percent of, of the, a number of people living in our streets every night until we can get that back down to a, a, a more, I mean, you hear over and over again that uh, you will always have homeless people, I, I don't think that is necessarily true. But let's at least get back down to where we were in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen and then re, reassess if we can, you know, indeed eliminate homelessness in our city because it is um, it is a failure of our society to allow this to keep happening worse and worse. And I know that all three of us agree with that. I know that the city and many other groups are doing a lot to fight this, this problem. But we're not doing the right things and we need to focus on uh, taking the best practices from the cities in this country that are doing a better job than us.
For me, I think it's making meaningful progress on the prosperity initiative that the county and the city have both passed, which is a set of policy priorities that tackle the root causes of generational poverty in our region. So it's kind of a cheating answer because it includes a bunch of objectives under it. But I really think that this kind of comprehensive approach is what is needed. And this was put together by people who have been working on issues around housing, economic mobility, um, you know, youth, how people age in place, like how we're providing for our communities and what access they have resources to. We need to put teeth in that, we need to put money into actually implementing that so that it's not just a piece of paper. So I like the idea of looking at a, at a, passing a bond perhaps, that's like tied to measurables that are included as part of the initiative, like the different sort of priorities within it. Breaking the cycle of poverty, I believe, um, no, I don't just believe, research shows this. We know that if we break the, that cycle, um, that we improve quality of life, that we attract industry, that we generate true like wealth for people, especially the people who need it the most, who lack equity. That we address our climate future, um, that we're more economically sustainable, more connected as a community because people can stay in their houses and their neighborhoods. The ripple out effects of that are tremendous, and I was so excited when it was passed and it's almost never talked about, and I'm kind of obsessed with it.
Any follow-up question from you?
Uh, no, somebody touched, uh, I think it was Jim touched on the issue of mining right outside the city, copper mine right outside the city in the Santa Rita. Just a quick round of maybe thirty-second answer, yes or no, is this a good thing for your Tucson, bad thing for Tucson, oppose or, or deny? Or, I mean, obviously, it's not within the city's.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we don't.
But the city council can have an impact on, on how that decision is made.
So to me, that is, you might be surprised, but I would say no. On water, because there's no purple pipe gonna, gonna fuel that.
No.
That is strictly a straw in the ground and a lot of it, a big, big, big straw. So uh, I, I would, I would say no, um, if, if the city council had any ability to say no.
I've had some really interesting conversations with different um, union and labor groups. Um, and mining is an area where you will see working people have differences of opinion about projects like this. So I will say, yeah, I mean, personally, um, I don't think there's such a good thing as um, environmentally sensitive mining. I think it's incredibly destructive, you know, and you also bring in the cultural piece of, you know, sort of sacred lands, right? Um, all of these things are very important. I also want to ensure that I'm meeting with labor groups who are worried about the economic impact of, of what these jobs would bring in to say, okay, well, if I'm saying no to this, what else can we look at? Like, where is an area that we can agree on? I hear you, we need to bring in more jobs for you all, good-paying union jobs. We can do that without destroying our environment.
Yeah.
Well, I'm a union guy, so I'm gonna agree with a lot of that. Four hundred jobs for a big mine, I don't think is a good, good uh, expenditure of our, our, our resources. As measured, not in dollars per year, but in gallons per. As measured, not in dollars per year, but in gallons per job. Gallons per job. How many gallons does it cost for that one job? Now, we gotta get our copper from someplace. That's a reality. That's, you just can't get by that. And the reality is, is we would be importing it, um, from places that don't have our environmental concerns, but we have a large community here, and, um, I don't think the Santa Rita is the place for it. Now, I have personal reasons for not liking it in that spot. It's a very, it was a very beautiful spot. But that aside, that aside, we have a water issue in this city. If we do not solve it, we're not gonna be talking about growing the city. We're gonna be talking about managing its reduction because of the cost and availability of water. People fight wars over water. Water's a really, really important thing, and we ignore our water at, at, at our peril.
It's an interesting statistic, uh, for a K B I dashboard, basically, you know, uh, you know, water per gallons per job. That's an interesting proposal. All right, uh, well, at this point, I think we can wrap up. I wanna thank all our participants. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Leighton. Thank you, Miranda, for your, your openness and willing to be here and discuss these issues freely with us without having advanced notices to what the questions might be. Thank you to, to my partner, Barathon, for, for helping to moderate. And thank you all for joining us. Uh, again, uh, we are the Democrats of Greater Tucson. That is thedgt.org. Uh, you can find us on the web, and we have a YouTube channel where all these videos are posted, uh, of all our events. Uh, so I invite you to join us, and if you want to encourage discussions like this uh, in the southern, southern Arizona region, uh, please join us at thedgt.org and consider becoming a member of dgt.org for just $24 a year. Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.